Good evening. I'd like to call the utility board public meeting for September 16, 2025 to order at 6:40 PM. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a roll call please?
Robert Carnahan.
Here.
Julie Rivera.
Here.
Chuck Becker.
Here.
Mary Joan Dixon.
Here.
Nicholas Recupido.
Here.
Greg Parker.
Here.
Richard Field.
Here.
I am President, Benjamin Aldrich.
He had to step out. He'll be right back.
Oh, thanks. Uh, David Austin.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Item one, approval of the minutes for August 19, 2025.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Parker, second by Mr. Recupido. Any questions?
Yes. Um, I'm going to direct it to Neil, something that I read in the minutes. For phase three of the Westside Interceptor, there's a 3A, which is 3.3 million, and then 3B, which is 1 million. So that project has a total of 4.3 million?
Yeah, Bob, and those estimates were from March of 2024 that at this board meeting we had, the previous month, that provided direction to give an update on where those projects were at at that time. And so, yeah, those items that you had mentioned for project three and 3A, 3B, those were from March of '24.
Okay, but we did it center minutes, so.
Sure.
That I just wanted clarification.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No other discussion? Can I get a roll call please?
Robert Carnahan.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Chuck Becker.
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon.
Yes.
Nicholas Recupido.
Yes.
Greg Parker.
Yes.
Richard Field.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to item two, instruction on moving forward with Westside Sanitaries to Interceptor Phase Three. So basically, as like Bob just asked, those questions are quite outdated. Speaking with Neil, with project two, seven, eight months, you said roughly?
Yeah, once they get started, and we had discussed this at the August meeting, is the contractor has got materials ordered, and they're going to begin construction following the harvest, so they don't, you know, disrupt all the ag fields.
Yeah, so with that said, outdated numbers of about what percentage do you think was kind of completed from?
It was about 25%, and that was a 2023 project, and, you know, subsequent towards that end of '23, we were given direction, you know, stop where you're at. You have a new council coming in. We want to make sure that their direction and their policies are moving forward consistent with what their guidance has been given from the voters. So at that point, we did stop work on design, so we have conceptual routings for a couple different options, and we worked through those with Tim and Tony and staff. And should you provide direction to move forward with phase three, project three, if you will, we would do the same thing of here's the cost benefit analysis of this route is a little deeper, but it does provide benefits. This route's a little shallower. It's going to be cheaper on costs, but you would have to do additional, that 3B routing to connect the area directly northeast of Paris and 155th, which is, I believe, 40 acres or so undeveloped.
Okay.
So there's benefits and detractions from each of those, but we would work with staff and Ben, of course, to move forward on that, should you see that being approved and moved.
Yeah, and that's the reason it's on the agenda, so we can start the process sooner than later, so.
Yeah, I think we ought to. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Form of a motion or just?
No, I don't think this was a motion, right, Dave? This just comes from my given direction to Neil to continue forward with it.
Yeah. Yeah, and we can do that and work with Ben and staff and provide you monthly updates with the rest of the projects as well.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it says item four, but it would be three, but bless you. Written report, fund report, clerk treasurer.
Cash and expenditure reports were previously done out to you all.
All right, thank you. Item five, consultants, engineering sanitary update. Nice, Neil.
I may have already said this regarding project two of the Westside Interceptor and what that schedule is, but we will continue to provide updates on that project as it comes forward. We have all of our permits from IDAM and the county permits. There were two of them we were required to do. One was the road cut and then the occupation of a county right of way, because while this area is entirely within your utility services district, it is outside the corporate limit. So both of those permits have been submitted and approved by the county commissioners, so we're ready to move forward once the contractor gets their materials in and the harvest is complete. We've also sent letters out to all the adjoining residents with the contractor's contact information and my own, and we talked to several of them. We have about 12, I believe, total that are immediately impacted by the project, and we're working with them just to minimize the disruption, because.
Like driveway kind of issue?
Yeah, yeah. Construction is always ugly, but we're working with them to make sure they're aware of the schedule, and if they got any questions, they can contact me directly. So we provided that information to those residents.
Okay. Any other questions for Neil?
Sir.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Neil. Moving on to item two, consultants, water update, Sebel. Kevin.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Yep.
Hello. Uh, side, we're starting with that, that east side with, sorry, with, Captain, WPM. That system has been up and going for an awful bunch. I had not heard of issues of any sort. And feed control system for the, the personal power has been up for that time. So everything on the east is looking okay at the moment, control spots and operations. The deductible dropping for the, of, do well how, sort of, greater, on up and substantial load because of it being a high of the cinema of the lakeside valve developed as the, the tends to happen, but.
We lost him.
Yeah, we think we lost you, Kevin. It was kind of breaking up. Oh, you're not there.
He's gone.
All right, I guess if he comes back on, we can go back to him, but we'll move on to director of operations, superintendent. Tim.
Yeah, we got, the guys were out today at lift station three over here on Morse doing those insert valve as you guys approved at the last utility board meeting. They got started on that. They got about two more days to be finished with putting those valves in, so, and then change. They're actually putting the stop line tops in, and then they're changing one valve so we can get that pump out and get it rebuilt, so that's underway. We did have another break on the force main today or yesterday of by Greg's house, right one foot away from the last one that was broken. It was in the stone, and it created a little sinkhole, but it was, it wasn't boiling out water out of the ground, but it definitely was broke again, so. We're still, we got all the numbers for redoing the, for doing the force main. We got a couple prices to either excavate a trench and put it in or to bore it in. Unfortunately, we've called this now five, we just called in again for locate for that fiber optic line without any success, so I don't know where we go from there. It's kind of, we need to do something, and we were, we've, we've now called in our fifth locate for that, and Rycow was actually calling in for specific fiber optic locate now, because they kind of just keep, they finally did locate the gas, but not that, so I don't know.
I know how you do it. You.
Dig it up.
You dig it up, because you're.
Correct. We are really at that point, so.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we are at that point, so. And then lift station one, we have the new panel, and we have a bunch of parts for doing those pump upgrades over there. We are waiting the pumps still, but we have all the rest of the pieces in, so that stuff's been slowly trickling in, so we're kind of getting that in schedule here to get going. I think we should add the pumps next week sometime, so that will be next on the list also, so. Lot going on in those big lift stations, for sure.
I've got two questions, sorry.
Yes, sir.
First of all, what, what is the process on getting Lakeside South hooked up to the well? Where do we stand on that?
We just stand on shillings running that water main through their property to 141st.
From the eight to the 12?
Well, no, the 12 to the 12, so the 12 inch line goes down the mid, ending at Lakeside now needs to go south to 141st and west to their property boundary where to tie into that 12 inch line.
And that, that is currently a cornfield as well, despite the issues with phase two.
So I could assume that they wouldn't want to start tearing up a cornfield.
Okay, so they're working on it.
Well, I would assume they'd work on it after they get the crops out, yeah.
Okay, and the next thing, there's a bunch of pipes sticking out of the ground across from the Boys and Girls Club. Do you know what those are?
That, that's surf internet.
Those pipes that are sticking out of the ground? Are they going to stay there?
That's where the pump is or the, I forget what they call it, but that's like the main terminal block or something for the surf internet for the town, so that'll become a cabinet and electric service and so on, but that is where the central part of it's located, so.
I can answer that question.
It should not look like that when it's done, but it's just a lot of stuff going on there.
I had a power failure on the other side of the street, too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, NCHCO's going to have to replace eight hundred feet of electrical supply to the building over there.
Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah.
That's why they had.
They're getting on both sides of the street.
That's why they were closed on that day of school?
Yeah.
All right, Kevin, we'll go back to you.
Yep, sorry about that. So what I was saying at the end was east side, since the discussion with the lakeside south, the really the next step is to upgrade P O Vs and parage code to get that onto the major system. It is what was recommended to Tim, I think a proposal, and it's been turned in, so trying to get that situated. On the west side, further investigations on the site for the well location has been ongoing. I think that may, like, let's talk about it a little bit, that's really number one. In coordination with IDAM, I do have a response that's ready for the NOI submission application process that goes through town, and so we have a couple days until the thirty day response time. And so that is, that's ready, a draft has been reviewed by the water department, and so everything is ready to go. Just making sure that everyone's on the same page with it.
Any questions for Kevin? All right, thank you, Kevin. We'll move on to town manager. Anything, Ben?
For utilities, alls I have is to check your email. I sent an email. We have developers who would like to meet and discuss them helping with the installation of production wells and test wells for the west side water system. So if you could check your emails and see if that date works for you, and that is all that I have.
Yeah, I believe that's the 23rd. I think IRS VP'd already for that.
I think it was the 25th, then we changed it to the 23rd.
Yeah. All right, thanks. Town attorney, Dave?
I'm a bit of positive. We've been in some communication, preliminary communications with Lowell. So they will be looking for a meeting with us, and I presume you likewise with them. I'll be in touch with Rich and Nick on coordination and details.
So they're, they're going to meet with you and Rich and Nick and anybody else?
No, they, they asked for a representative meeting.
Like our town manager can't be there?
If it wasn't named. I didn't send the letter, Bob. They did, so I'm reporting that update.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, on October 21st, the AIM conference is going on. I will not be at the next meeting.
Okay.
I will be there.
All right, thanks for the info. We'll move on to whole business update discussion. Sue, rate increase. Do we have anything else on that currently? Sue, did you have any more update for that right now, or?
No, I don't have any more update on that. I am answering some, I'm in conversation with Ben, getting back. I owe him some information on a question he had, and we're sort of going back and forth on that, so nothing to report out yet.
All right, thank you, Sue. Okay, J. Mott's report that was kind of taken care of during the attorney. Public comment for utility board. Any public comment? Second call, public comment for utility board. Third call? Nobody online?
No, hit three.
Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned at 6:56 PM.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Cedar Lake Town Council Meeting for September 16th, 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) and two republic for his fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order at 7:06 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Amber.
Robert Carnahan.
Here.
Julie Rivera.
Here.
Nicholas Cuquibido.
Here.
Chris Becker.
Here.
Greg Parker.
Here.
Mary Joan Dixon.
Here.
Richard Keel.
Here.
I am present. Benjamin Eldridge.
Present.
David Austin.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. We will open up the floor for public comment on agenda items only. Public comment on agenda items only. Second call.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, please state your name and address for the record, and we just want to try to keep comments to three minutes to keep things rolling along, please.
My name is Terry Cox. I live at 8505 West 139th Avenue, Cedar Lake. So, our attorney, Nathan Biss, could not be present this evening. He did draft a letter that he asked me to read to the council. First off, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to address you. Dear John Council, on the agenda for this evening, you have a proposed vacation of alleged public walkway located within Lake Shore subdivision. Several items you should know. Number one, the legal description that labels this as a vacated railway is incorrect. This walkway was a planted walkway by the original development, which was located alongside a separate and distinct railway, which was later vacated. By choosing this form of legal description, you're not following the original intention, design, and actual legal descriptions of this area. Two, in order to vacate public property, it must be owned by you, the town municipal corporation. You've never received, or owned, or maintained this walkway. Thus, you have no right to vacate it. Three, I understand historically that you may have vacated adjacent portions of this, but that was under the wrong principle, that it was a vacated railway property. By vacating this land, which you do not own, you are taking land which collectively is owned by the subdivision for the benefit of a private individual. The only authority you have to do this is under eminent domain, which has not been engaged in this process. Fourth, a clear review of the historical plating of this area will showcase that your past vacation of this walkway is improper. Please do not continue to compound past mistakes and instead respect the land ownership rights, which are so fundamentally clear in this situation. The Lake Shore subdivision has owned and it has insured and paid the real estate taxes on this property for 100 years. You've been given the deed for Outlots C and the underlying deed for the walkway with the restrictions that go with it. Seventy members from the subdivision have voted not to vacate this land. Mr. Regal purchased a property in the Lake Shore subdivision, which is governed by bylaws, which you have. I sent a copy this morning in your email, and I also just delivered one to you, and it shows that how this should have started out was to actually bring it to the members of the Lake Shore subdivision and have them vote on it, and it did not happen that way. No one has ever voted on this, other than the 70 members that are now actually dropping it off at the town to say, "Don't vacate it." So, I strongly suggest that this gets transferred back to the Lake Shore Subdivision Association, so it can be handled according to our bylaws, which everybody, when they buy a property in there, they know that it's governed by these bylaws they're giving to them. And that would be the way to handle it, so that it would be fair for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on agenda items?
Sue Beany, 13835 Huesman Street. I'm here tonight over the walkway path. Ms. Cox says that the subdivision owns it. During the, she came in on the September 2nd council meeting and said that she had done some research, but hadn't found a deed or title for it, which then prompted me to go through some very old paperwork that my grandfather had saved, and I have two responses from the Monon Railroad Company over the walkway path. The first one is dated February 19th, 1948. It says, "Mr. Charles W. Van Horn, Cedar Lake, Indiana. Dear sir, I have your letter of February 16th with reference to purchasing that, sorry, purchasing some property in front of your home at Cedar Lake, and I am sending you here with a copy of letter, which I have addressed to your neighbor, Mr. Mattingly." The correction needs to be, that's Ms. Mattingly. That was my grandfather's aunt, my great-great aunt. She lived in the house next to the conference grounds, sense there. "Mr. Mattingly, this will save me addressing you in connection with the same matter, and will advise you of our position. Thank you for addressing me on this subject. Just as soon as we are in position to sell this land, you will be contacted. Yours truly," I believe it's W. P. Sullivan." Now, there's a copy here of a letter to Mr. A. Mattingly, again, the N. "Cedar Lake, Indiana. Dear sir, I have your letter with reference to the purchase of C, I, and L Right-Away, near lots 41 and 42, Lake Shore Edition. Your letter has been placed on file and will be considered at the time we get to the point where we are in position to talk intelligently about the sale of this property. I doubt that you will, I doubt that will be sooner than September or October of this year, if then. May I suggest that you ignore any rumors or gossip that you are hearing, that you hear regarding the sale of this property. The problem of selling this land is that present busts into me entirely, and I do not propose to do anything about it until such time as we are operating over the new route. I appreciate your writing about this matter, as it will save time in looking you up when the property can be sold."
Can I just let you know you got about a minute?
The next letter, April 1st, 1949, Mr. Charles Van Horn. "Dear sir, in connection with the sale of land at Cedar Lake, we have encountered some obstacles that have been more than, more or less tedious. However, we have worked out a plan whereby the property in front of your lots has been sold to Mr. Monte B. Becker, with the agreement that it will be resold to you at the rate of $7 per lineal foot. According to the information we have, you are the owner of Outlots 36 and 37, Lake Shore Edition. We expect to be in a position to close this deal with Mr. B. Becker within the next 30 days. May I suggest that if you are interested in the property in front of your lots, you contact Mr. B. Becker at once and make your arrangements with him accordingly. Yours very truly, W. P. Sullivan." And then, on June 27th, 1949, Monte B. Becker, husband and wife, Lake County, do grant bargain, sell, convey, release, quit claim unto association, Lake Shore Subdivision Incorporated, and I'm not going to go into reading the whole thing, but I have it highlighted that I submitted, where it states, "Beginning at southeast corner of Lot 20 in Lake Shore, as said subdivision appears up record in flat book 20, page nine. Addition to Cedar Lake, Indiana, sense easterly 70 feet on the south line of said Lot 20 extended, sense southerly 40 feet, sense westerly 70 feet to the northeast corner of block nine in said Lake Shore Edition, sense northerly 4 feet the place of beginning, excepting there from the westerly 10 feet thereof, parallel lines." And the survey plat of our lakefront homes and Outlots C, the walkway, it's always stated in there since 2010 that the homeowners own the walkway path.
Ma'am, please give, can you please give her a time?
She's got it. 30 minutes is up.
Okay. You want to wrap it up, please? I'm going to get a timer here, is what I'm going to do. That's what we'll do, Ben.
On the survey plat, it has always said from 2010 that the homeowners own the walk path. When a home is sold on the lakefront, there is no separate deed for that walk path. It's all sold as one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment on agenda items only?
I have the actual railroad deed. They chose very railroad grant, and there's no walkway on it.
Okay. Do you have anybody online?
No, I'm ready.
No.
The walkway is, it's not on their deed, and they own it.
All right. Public comment on agenda items is now closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Claims, all town funds, $260,955.99. Waste water operating, $251,450.28. Water utilities, $62,237.14. Storm water, $2,022.43. Payroll, $911.25, $443,407.11. And August remittances, $237,610.23. Donations, four United States flags and four Indiana flags from Woodman Life, CEO Caroline Sumala, and Natalie Pace. Enviro Fab, Joe Kojan, Incite donation to police department, mount bars on three cabinets. And lastly, manual journal entries, August 1st, 2025 to August 31st, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Mr. Becker, seconded by Mr. Parker, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
On the claims, we've got Lowell Sewers Sinking Fund, and it's for August and September. Both are $20,587. Why do we have August and September? Did we not pay August?
I did not receive August, so I had to reach out to Lowell and get an update, so I got August and September at the same time.
And that's the same with the Lowell Sewer Works. We got two there for that, for $92,854.
I received the bills on the same date.
Okay. Just with clarification on that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Amber.
Robert Carnahan.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Chuck Becker.
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon.
Yes.
Richard Keel.
Yes.
Greg Parker.
Yes.
Nicholas Cuquibido.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 1517, Regal Public Way Vacation. David Austin, we had a reading a month ago. How do we proceed with this now?
You have conducted a public hearing, so that legal requirement is completed. Your deliberation is what you're here for now, and action you would consider appropriate. May I offer a couple of tidbits?
Please.
I heard this tonight specifically, that-
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was indicated to the council that this was not a public way for vacation. I do not find that to be legally accurate. It is a public way for vacation consideration. No town ownership is reported. This property is argued to belong to the HOA. That isn't a requirement either in the statute. Previous vacations were not valid. I know from having drafted the documents and sat through proceedings like this that there have been a number of public way vacations, some in this neighborhood. No challenges, no objections, no controversy over ownership. None of that occurred with any of those. That would also be part of the comment that past vacations are improper. They're not improper. They're in the book, 367312, and valid. The circumstance of the Lake Shore Homeowners Association is private, not your responsibility to deal with a private entity, ownership, dispute, disagreement, whatever it is. That's not town government's responsibility, and it isn't in that code section. Couple of technical things in documentation. I think you all have received the same documentation, staff and folks have circulated, mostly, is that there are plats, there were surveys, there were legal descriptions, there were historical documents, data, and information. None of those items refute the character of this property as public. We thought we were going to receive, and it was promised in a letter by the attorney for the homeowners, that we would get title work. We have not received current title work, at least I haven't. And I certainly have been paying attention to this. I would also indicate there's no current survey, but the survey, the most recent survey, best we can tell, is from 2010. Surveyor Glenn Croft performed it, sealed it, signed it, and he references the public way that he was studying, reviewing, and opining on in his drawings. So you have some salient considerations. And there were a lot of records, again. This was a well-documented advocacy and opponent circumstance in a democracy. That's great. So you have an ordinance in front of you. I would suggest that if approval consideration was in a motion, that it be included, that infrastructure would be underground and verified as such, as was a condition at the onset of this, to the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Rego, and that... And I think that those are a couple of salient items. Hopefully, they're available.
Thank you, Attorney Oshin. Can we have the Regos come up, please? Anything you folks would like to add?
I just have a couple of thoughts. We've owned this property for seven years. At no time has anyone ever walked in front of our house on the abandoned railroad walkway, which is what our survey calls it. There is 60 feet beyond the path that is privately owned. Everyone who wants to be near the lake will walk along the lakeshore. Last month, I attempted to walk the path. I walked the two inches in front of our house, through Paul and Becky's barbecue grill and patio, up through and around the utility pole and huge bush by Dan and Terry's house, over the dog fence by Betty Jo's house, until I was stopped. Even if I could walk the entire path, it stops at Peterson's house. The last house before the conference grounds has been vacated. There is a fence at the conference grounds that has been there for 50 years. There is no way to access the lakeshore from the path, because there is not a path to get there from the walking path. I would be walking through private property to get there. It goes nowhere. Secondly, there is access to the beach on Lot C, which runs from the end of 139th Avenue, and then 30 feet in front of our house and beyond, which everyone already uses. We have never prevented anyone from settling in front of our house. Our vacant request has nothing to do with Lot C. That will always be available for Lake Shore residents, because it is owned by Lake Shore.
Thank you, ma'am.
Once again, we come before the council concerning this path. It's been abandoned for probably 80 years. The seven years that we've known there, it was completely covered with trees and brush. You could not access it. To the north of us, there are structures. People would have to be dodging. It's on such a steep incline, nobody would walk it. If anybody was ever tried to walk it, and they saw the lakefront, they go down to the lakefront. The lakefront is beautiful. It's 30 feet wide. It's 200 feet long. People go down there and look at the lake and the beach. There's no need for... This has been abandoned. The only people that have taken care of it for 80 years have been the residents. Our property was fenced. There was no way you could get through there. As I said, there were trees and shrubs. And this does not affect the neighborhood beach. Building this deck and vacating it so we can build a deck does not hurt any of the residents in the neighborhood. You know, we have met every objection or question that this council or the previous council has had relating to that, and we just think that it's time that it should be vacated so we can build our deck.
And there's not a tenant or a tenant's property, so checkers have not been paid on that.
And/or insurance. That's all. It's not true.
So it's not...
It is true. I told them.
There was... Ms. Cox, you had your ability to speak. Please be respectful of the petition.
If there's no...
Thank you for...
You're welcome. Any discussion?
Our documents.
Well, there was an opportunity for everybody to come up and speak.
I understand, but...
Okay. There was an opportunity for everybody to speak, and an opportunity for document submission for a month.
Okay, but someone's been cited.
Okay.
I agree with that.
I have to be transparent. The Rego family, all this stuff about the ownership of this strip of land aside, the Rego family has done everything that the town council has asked them to do. And this is going back when, before most of us sat up here on the council, if I'm not mistaken, Bob and Julia, I mean, this... You were there, you guys were both here. So everything that we asked them to do, I believe the lines have been moved. Any type of contingencies, they're okay with. I just want to get that on the record. And I also want to get on the record that, one, I'm not a proponent at all in that domain. I wouldn't want to take anybody's property, especially an HOA's property. And with all the information that was given, we've... I'd sent everything over to Attorney Oshin, everything that was given from both sides of this debate. And Attorney Oshin still states, "This property is public." Okay? I just want to be clear. There hasn't been anything that's been kept from anybody, and everything's been shared, and the Regos have done everything to this point that they were asked to do.
And I just want to also say, you know, we've looked at both sides of this. I've considered both sides of this. Ms. Cox, you did a lot of late work on this. I've read your emails several times. But going back two or three years, even this information, if it was presented two or three years ago, I don't think my decision would change. The Regos have, as far as we know, buried those property... NIPSCO's buried the property lines. That's what we've asked. And for me, going back now and saying, "Well, we notified adjacent property owners, but there are owners nearby that now have an objection to it," that's... It's coming in like in the ninth inning at this point. We've already had Mr. Rego do what we've asked him to do. Maybe in the future, when we're alerting adjacent property owners, we need to expand it, the letters that we send out. I'm not sure that's something we'll look at in the future. But for me, this isn't, you know, it's not an easy decision. There's going to be people upset on both sides. But I hope we can make a decision tonight based on what's right. The hardest thing and the right thing are the same. And I just hope we can come to a conclusion, and everybody could learn to live with it and be neighbors and move forward from this point.
Folks, the time for public comment was... We had it. We can go back and forth all night on this. You guys can come up, they can come... It'll never end. And we've had two opportunities now, just in the recent past, to discuss this. And I just want to be clear, this is not a petition to give up lakefront property. There's... I feel like, I got to be blunt here, I feel like there's been a push to have the Regos give up 10-foot of property, so they can get 10-foot of property. And, one, I don't agree with that. That's a land grab in another sense. Okay? And some people might not want to hear that, but that's what I've heard in public here. And second off, this is not lakefront property that's being considered to be vacated. This is strip of land off the lake, and it's been vacated. I think I counted four times in this subdivision.
I did ask Cliff to put it up on GIS up on there, if you wanted to, Nick, for visual, just to show the...
Yeah, thank you.
And could you click on Outlot C? So basically, the way I see it, and the way I was reading emails also, as far as giving up lake access, it's not. 139th to the other little square just south of Outlot C, that's the access.
No, look what they made you draw, and without you telling us. If you...
Please, please.
You'll see that the other line is...
Ms. Cox, man, you need an opportunity.
But you're trying to make this into something it's not.
Mr. Teal is exactly correct. There's public, there's access for the subdivision down 139th to the lake. Correct. That's all you're trying to state.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay. And what I'm saying is...
Ms. Cox, Ms. Cox, please, please. Ms. Cox, please, please. It's not going to turn into a free-for-all tonight.
I don't want it to be a free-for-all.
Is there any other discussion?
I have not.
Tim, Mr. Cuback, do you have something?
I just would like to remind you guys that NIPSCO's agreement with the Regos, and also the application, states that they need to maintain that north 7 and 1/2 feet of that path for the easement for the moved utilities. So if there is a motion to vacate, it should just be the south 42.5 feet of that legal description. So that would leave, that would leave that 7 and 1/2 feet on the north side for the current utility easement to continue to go through to the next two neighbors, which it is.
Yeah.
There's a hole in there now that's been put there, and that supplies...
Do you get that?
NIPSCO gave us a copy of some verbiage to be added into that ordinance, Tim. Russ Dillon, when NIPSCO did. And it's basically what you're saying, just a little bit more drawn out, but...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that 7 and 1/2 feet remained utility easement.
Okay.
So... I'm sorry, Tim, you're saying the 7 and 1/2 feet would be maintained by the Regos?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't see the new... It just needs to remain an easement for the utilities, whichever way it happens.
Yeah. Attorney Oshin?
The Regos still have the right to use the property, the entire 50 feet. They have the... They have given or granted by agreements to NIPSCO 7.5. So nothing goes away about the land. Land stays.
Okay.
How it's used is what we're talking about.
Okay.
And they can continue to use it.
All right. So if...
I'm also cognizant of that NIPSCO language, and if you're...
I'd like to make a motion to...
Oh, did you?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rego public right-of-way vacation contingent upon, they follow the NIPSCO agreement, and verification that the lines were buried, which I believe they were, but if we could get verification by...
Verification of legal description.
Dave, do we need verification of legal description?
We should. So it's in your file, and it's clean.
Okay. And also verification of legal description of the property.
I'll second your motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
May I suggest that the comments of the evening be also included in your record of the motion?
In the record of the motion?
In the record of this meeting for the motion.
Okay. So you would like Mr. Rivera to amend her motion?
I'd like the approved minutes of this meeting.
And amend to include the approved minutes of this meeting?
Correct. I concur.
And this is a... Two reading ordinance?
I think we approved the first reading.
It was deferred, I believe, ordinance?
It was deferred.
Yeah.
And using two votes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Parker, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1517, Rego Public Way Vacation, with the contingencies that the NIPSCO, the NIPSCO request for the 7 and 1/2-foot easement be inserted into the ordinance, that proof and verification of the lines is provided. Verification of legal description?
Verification of legal description, and verifying that the lines were buried.
Okay. And the approved minutes of this meeting also being included?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussions? Roll call, please, Ms. Amber.
Robert Carnahan?
I'm going to make a statement here. First of all, the Regos are a good family. They're a giving family, and I appreciate everything they do. But I've been asked, "You used to vote against all vacations. Why have you changed? Does somebody got you in their pocket?" So I'm going back to voting on vacation, not to approve vacations. I've got to get back to what I used to do, and...
Yeah. You're listening to the roll of the Rego.
I also just have always felt that it's taking property away from somebody.
I didn't call your name yet, but thank you. Chuck Becker?
No.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Teal?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Nick Ricciubetto?
Yes. Motion carries five to two. So we will have this on the next agenda for adoption?
Adoption, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Plan or BZA? Number one, favorable recommendation to town council, maintenance letter of credit in the amount of $111,534.56 for Centennial Billis, pages two and three. Approve six to zero at Plan Commission Meeting on 8/20/2025. Any discussion on this item?
No.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
You got a second?
Can we get a little order in here first before we vote? It's a lot of distraction. I'm hard-hitting to begin. Yeah, I didn't even hear what was going on.
Mary Joan...
Motion Greg seconded.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Parker. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Chuck Becker?
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Teal?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Nick Ricciubetto?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. New business. Number one, disbursement requisition number 27 of funds from 2022 A Construction Fund in the amount of $22,729, excuse me, and zero cents. Ms. Amber, would you like to take this one?
These are two of the four police vehicles that you all approved earlier this year. This is the outfitting with the equipment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
We have a motion made by... We have a motion made by Mr. Teal, seconded by Mr. Becker, to approve dispersment requisition number 27 of funds from 2022 A Construction Fund. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Chuck Becker?
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Field?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Nick Recupero.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Number two, discussion and award for comprehensive plan. Mr. Eldridge?
So, a few months ago, I gave you both, I gave each of you proposals from two engineering firms. We've had discussion of redoing of the town's comprehensive plan, as the, the old one is outdated. At the last park board meeting, there was discussion on the, the park impact fee ordinance that needed to be redone. And the attorney gave, or the attorney recommended to the park board that they give a favorable recommendation to ask the town council to move on the town comprehensive plan, getting that project going. So, you've had two proposals now for a couple of months, reached out to four engineering firms, only two of them are interested in doing it. I think it was Lock, Lock Mueller Group and Commonwealth Engineers. So, yeah, it's... So, are we voting on two items here? No, no. What you're, which, what we're asking is that you award, if you want to move forward with, with doing the town comprehensive plan, that you make that award to one of the two engineering firms that gave proposals.
And who do you recommend?
My recommendation would be Commonwealth. I have not worked with either engineering firm, but when you compare the two proposals that were given, one is significantly less than the other, and one is very detailed in their comp, in their proposal and provided references with work that they've done in the past.
And what was the price for Commonwealth?
Commonwealth was around $50,000. I want to say the other one was around $98,000. Commonwealth also did provide, for lack of a better term, almost like an à la carte list.
Yeah.
If you wanted to add to your comp plan, which different services they could provide and the cost for each one of those services.
All right, based on the recommendation for, from the town manager, I will...
Could I discuss this a little more, please?
Okay. So we could make a motion and second, have discussion.
Okay, you'd like to.
Sure.
So, what, which one did you say about?
Commonwealth.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Carnahan, seconded by Mr. Teal, to award the comprehensive plan to Commonwealth Engi, is it Commonwealth Engineering?
Yes.
Discussion. First off, I don't, I have two problems with this. First off, I don't see it in the packet, and I don't think it's appropriate that we vote to approve this without it being in the packet. Second off, I just don't feel comfortable right now approving a contract when we have two prices only for such an important document for the future of our town. I was hoping to have a little bit more discussion, I know I was out of town for a few weeks here, but I have, I have issues with, like I said, one, approving this without it being in packet, and two, I think that we should, I would hope that we could have gotten more proposals on this.
I concur with you, and we've also certainly had our issues with Commonwealth in the past, which, I, I, haunts me. I thought their presentation looked good, because I thought we all had it, so...
Yeah, we had packet.
We did, yeah, but I don't think the public does.
And we didn't reach out to that other firm, was it V S and they didn't want to do it? So, we've tried for three.
And Christopher, Christopher V S...
We tried for four.
Christopher V S didn't want to do it either.
Right, and sometimes like the pull is small and we just have to take the two bids into consideration.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Amber.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Chuck Becker?
No.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Field?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
No.
Nick Recupero.
No, motion carries four to three. Number three, discussion and approval of Verizon cell tower contract. Mr. Eldridge?
So, last month I provided you, the council, or two months ago, with a proposal that Verizon wanted to construct a cell phone tower. They submitted a, a contract, which I then gave to the attorney. He made corrections that he would like to see on the, on the contract, gave it back to them. They made those corrections and I got the updated contract, I think it was yesterday. And so, I got you hard copies, and in that hard copy, it shows where the cell phone tower will be, it'll be on the W P M site, up against the trees, away from residential homes, and, and kind of out of the way. Katie Harms is here representing Verizon, if you have any questions for her. She flew in today from Texas and is flying out tomorrow to Texas. So she is here for you. So if you have any questions, she'd be happy to answer them.
Would you please step on up, ma'am, and just introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, my name is Katie Harms, thank you guys for having me. This is my first time to Cedar Lake and it is beautiful. I had lunch, or dinner at the Lighthouse and those crab cakes are good, so... Yeah, so we, I just want to make one correction, I'm with Diamond Communications, we're a telecom infrastructure company. We work with all of the carriers. This is what happens to be currently pushed by Verizon, but the tower is able to hold all carriers. So it has the ability to hold multiple carriers that cover multiple residents, whoever is holding, you know, various carriers at the time.
Okay. Any questions for...
And this was just going to be a regular tower design, right? Not a tree designer or anything like that?
No, so it, it, it kind of looks silly, to be honest here. We've had them built in the past and they kind of look like big old fake Christmas trees.
Yeah, I don't like it.
So these are just a standard monopole, and we're looking at about 175 feet.
Okay, can we explain to the public that this is a, a revenue item?
Yes, so there was some discussion that we had gotten offers to put antennas on our water towers, and those offers were for more money to do that. And when I talked to Ms. Harms about that, the explanation was they were leasing our property, they were leasing our water tower, so that's why those offers were more. Here, they are constructing their facilities on our site at their expense. So we do, we will be getting what we call passive revenue from this cell tower, and has more carriers, I think it holds to four carriers. So as more carriers are added to the tower, we get a profit sharing portion of the revenue that, for that tower. This revenue we can use, it's passive income, so it's, it's money that we're not budgeting, and it can be used for a sidewalk program, it could go into our road construction, it could go into our utility, however the council sees fit to, to use this money.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
And then, and the, the income that we receive increases yearly.
And the, the starting, we will receive $900 a month?
Correct. It was $900 a month, and it's a 2% increase every year, and 15% increase of profit sharing with each additional carrier.
So it's 15% of the, the gross receipt that we receive from the carrier. So say we get $2,500 directly from AT&amp;T, who happens to hop on for the second tenant, you guys would receive 15% of that $2,500, on top of the $900.
And how many carriers can you carry on the pole?
We're pushing for as many as possible, typically it's three to four.
Three to four, not 10?
There's not 10 carriers. Well, I wish, but there's not 10 carriers. Typically it's AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, and there's, there is Boost Mobile, but they, they just filed for bankruptcy. So, that one's kind of, we're going to see how that, that goes, but...
All right, and my concern, we've got to look for income, because according to this chart that Jennifer gave me, we're going to lose $645,160 in 2026, $712,750 in 2027, and then we're going to lose $822,940 in 2028. That's due to the fact that state bill one, which is going to reduce your real estate taxes, so we need to look at avenues to try and come up with raising additional money. And the state has given us an option, which I hate to have to do, that in 2027, we can pass an income tax to make up what we're losing. So, I, I think we need to do things like bank out of the box and raise money, because I don't want to raise taxes, I got to pay it too.
I agree with you, Mr. Carnahan. I have a question for you, ma'am. The, there's, what's the benefit to customers? And how did you pick this location and, you know, is it going to be an enhanced service for customers in a certain vicinity?
So historically Cedar Lake has not been very welcoming to cell towers. Most of the carriers are on the water tanks. The water tanks kind of tend to have their own issues, maintenance-wise, you've got to shut everything down to remove them if you guys do maintenance on the towers, or on the, the water towers. You also have, your, your water directors don't like them on there because sometimes they can cause issues to the water towers. So that's, that's the biggest thing, where you guys have two water towers that you have coverage, you also have a, like a 300-foot tower on the south side that's on county property. You don't have enough coverage here. As I've seen driving around, I go from, I think I hit maybe three bars for a very, very short period of time. I'm a Verizon user myself, so I'm seeing that you guys just do not have the coverage. I don't know if you guys are getting complaints from your residents, but we know that Verizon has been trying to get in here for a while.
Thank you.
I do have a question, though, being that she stated there, not from Verizon, it's Diamond Communications. Do we, in the motion, does it have the contract have to reflect that and not Verizon, Dave?
Attorney question. It should reflect both, actually.
Okay.
One's a provider and one's conduit.
I just know that, you know, in the, in the discussion on approval of Verizon cell tower contract, but then, of course, on the bottom, at the last with the signature, Diamond Towers, you know, I would just...
Yeah, so we're the infrastructure, so we sublease to the, the carriers.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's an additional lease that we, we sub out to the carriers. We're the physical infrastructure, we lease the land from, from the city, or from the town.
And that would be Diamond Communications or Diamond Tower?
Well, that, we're, so Diamond, I'm Diamond Communications, so we have entities, we do business as, Diamond Towers Five is usually what we sign our signatures as.
Okay.
Doing business as, correct.
I just wanted to know legal wise, as far as what we do for the...
And I did provide yesterday the foreign registration force as well for state of Indiana.
What is that?
It basically states that we can do business in the state of Indiana.
Oh, okay. And by foreign, you mean another state?
Yeah, so, yeah, because we, we're, our corporate office is in New Jersey.
Okay.
I happen to be in Texas, but yeah, so foreign as in out of state.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not across seas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the lady?
I have one.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we need to put in there the two different names?
Diamond...
Towers.
Diamond Towers.
Five.
Five. Okay, Diamond Tower Five and Verizon cell tower contract.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Teal, to approve the Verizon and Diamond Tower Five cell tower contract. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Amber.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Chuck Becker?
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Field?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Nick Recupero.
No, motion carries six to one. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Number four, tree removal request at Potawatomi Park, 13043 Polk Street. Is this you, Ms. Ray, or is this...
This is a favorable recommendation that came from the park board. When property owner, Mr. Yukon, had a large tree encroaching in his property from Potawatomi, in our September park board meeting, they made a favorable recommendation for them to remove the tree, to use a licensed contractor in the town, to list the town as traditionally insured. They gave a recommendation to you for final decision making on the opportunity, and so it's before you tonight, knowing that Mr. Yukon will provide services down to stump grinding, and will be providing two for one, meaning if he's removing one tree, he will be placing two trees within the park system, maybe not in Potawatomi Park, but as the park board chooses those two trees would go.
And we don't have the pictures in our packet, I think that would have helped...
I was just looking for those as well, they were in the park board packet, but they didn't make it in, to this.
I saw the pictures and it was, it was encroaching.
Yeah.
And I think he's putting up a new fence, correct?
A new fence, and, you know, just some improvements to that state, to park, along the park.
Do you have anything for us, attorney option on this?
No, this is acted on like that he said, this is public domain.
Okay.
And you have a volunteer, any good volunteer?
Yeah.
Help us.
Okay, all right, thank you all. Any other discussion on this item? Or motion?
I'll make a motion to have the tree removed request at Potawatomi Park.
Okay, do it. Motion made by Ms. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Becker, to have the tree removed at Potawatomi Park at 13043 Polk Street. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Chuck Becker?
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Field?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Nick Recupero.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Number five, approval for heart and soul funds of $2,000 for grant. Mr. Eldridge?
Heart and soul.
The heart and soul?
Um, I'm going to defer this to Mary Joan.
Okay.
At our April meeting, we discussed being partners with them for the heart and soul grant, they received $80,000, and there was, I believe, a $10,000 match over the two years, and at that time we discussed giving them $2,000, but we did not vote on it. So at this time, I would like to approve that we give them the $2,000 we discussed at the April meeting for the heart and soul grant.
Jen, how much of the tourism funds do we have left?
You don't have any tourism money left.
This was, was this supposed to be out of promotion? Promoting Cedar Lake?
I don't remember what your guys' discussion was originally.
I believe that was a request to promotions line item.
And we are listed as partners with this legacy grant, just so you know.
You technically have just enough left in promotion.
Okay, then I will continue to add to my motion that we will take it out of town promotion. I'll second it.
We have a motion made by Ms. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Becker, to approve the award of $2,000 in a grant for the heart and soul funds with the money to come from the town promotion line item. Is that correct? All right, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Chuck Becker?
Yes.
Mary Joan Dixon?
Yes.
Richard Field?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Nick Recupero?
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to reports, town council reports. Mr. Carnahan?
The Cedar Lake Chamber of Commerce is selling Christmas trees, they'll have 165 of them, and they've already sold 60 of them. And they'll have 165 of them throughout the town, a lot of people put them in memory of loved ones, and a lot of people like coming to the community to see the beautiful decorations that we have.
What's the cost, Bob?
And the cost seems to go up because Leo's cost keeps going up.
Any other reports? There's, I guess there's people now that the weather's been nice, they're jogging around, doing whatever, and they're going across 141st there.
Well, that is the piece of roadway that we have Christopher Burke working on, you know, so maybe we can have them include that in the plans. Do you think it's something quicker than that, or?
Well, I told the resident that we were looking, we had Christopher Burke looking into getting us some, you know, a plan there and cost estimates for redoing that road. And I said, if the council wants, that something that could be incorporated into that project, it probably would be more cost effective.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Is that something that the council wants to look into?
Sure.
Yeah.
Safety.
Yeah, and the suggestion was, you know, I guess there's these types that have lights on them that flash.
Well, I was going to say, I think that we really need to do that with all of these crosswalks, because the ones that we have are, you know, the one by Hunley's and the Eagles for sure, you know, when you're going through there, people are assuming that you're going to stop for the crosswalk. And I'm guilty of it myself, you know, in the dark or whatever, you know, people just walk out and think that.
You're going to stop.
See them, which, you know, sometimes it's easier than others, but that light that you have to push or flashing light or whatever is definitely beneficial, so. Yeah, I mean, we can have them include that in their plan, and we can look into the cost of something like that. I mean, those lights that we did move over by, that's curve over here by the condos, those are the solar blinking caution lights, which help, you know, quite a lot, so.
Okay, is there anybody opposed to this?
No, so we should tell Ben, tell Luke.
Yeah, Ben, could you please do that?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. That's all I had for reports. Last call for council reports.
Well, are you going to, Mr. for Red?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to put that in red communication. All right, town attorney, attorney Austin, anything?
No reports.
Thanks, sir. Clerk Treasurer, Ms. Amber?
Audit continues with state board of counts, so I promise, once the audit is over, we will be all caught up on the minutes. I know we're a little behind there. And most importantly, your public hearing for your budget will be on your next agenda.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Town manager, Mr. Eldridge?
A couple of things. To go along with the Christmas trees, historically, I guess we have allowed the chamber to use the outlets on our streetlights for the Christmas trees, so we're going to continue that route. Also, for when Santa comes to visit, there's been discussion, do we have that in the chambers here, or do we utilize one of the bays at the new fire station? So we're still having that discussion, whether we're going to have that. Cliff met today with the electrician and the plumber to get the installation of the water softener at the new fire station. I've been talking with Barnes and Thornberger to meet with them again Thursday morning to go through a checklist of what needs to be done to make that transition from, to the town, to get the buildings in the town's name. So that's moving forward as well.
Thank you, sir.
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The park impact fee, I'm still, like, are we supposed to give, make a motion to approve it, or, I'm not understanding the comp, it was like it was included with those comprehensive plans, I'm a little confused.
So the recommendation or the, the process to update our park impact fee ordinance, the process that was provided by attorney Austin included the adoption of the town's comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
We have a comprehensive plan, but it's pretty outdated. And so the recommendation to the park board was that they recommend to the town council that we update our comprehensive plan so we can include that in the park impact.
So now they can move forward with the impact fee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to make sure of. Thank you.
Director of Operations, Mr. Kubiak?
Okay, I got a couple of things. So first of all, the, there's been a couple complaints about roosters that have come directly to the building department. We've, I've been out on three of them myself and addressed, and the people agreed to get rid of the roosters. I haven't, the neighbors that called, I let them know if they still heard them to call back, haven't heard, so that's been a little, because people are directly impacted or have, you know, it's easier to have some, an address or something to go there and kind of let them know. We were working on previously an ordinance that allows chickens. Currently, that's not even a thing, so it goes on rabbit whole fat.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that, I know we were talking about updating the ordinance, and I don't know where everybody stands on that, and I don't know, you know, I kind of make mention of that when I'm there, that the rooster, chickens aren't even allowed, but the roosters are causing neighborhood disturbance and, you know, blah, blah. Don't really know where, you know, there's been talk of adopting some type of a mound of chickens or something in the past, but I don't know where to go with that as far as, you know, what the game plan is, or if anybody has any suggestions, or is that something you guys want to consider, or when we are going out on these, do we make sure that chickens are being eliminated also?
I'll give you my opinion. I don't think it's a bad idea to have some kind of chicken ordinance, and there's, they're all over the place.
There's a lot of them.
And, and I think that done responsibly, I think they're great for kids, you know, helping chores and, you know, and if there's some regulations with it, I suppose, I wouldn't be opposed to it at all.
And I had one of our employees research surrounding communities. Even the city of Chicago allows chickens, but no roosters.
Yeah.
And I tried to get it put on the plan commission agenda, and I couldn't get it put on there.
We have a lot of stuff, and I know that there was a lot of research done with other communities, and there was some, some stuff started, but we'll just continue on in that fashion then, but I think that's a good idea that we set a number, and obviously the no rooster seems to be the thing that anybody does complain about, so.
And Tim, what we have, it reflects fowl, which is birds. I don't, you know, I had those peacocks in my neighborhood, you know, I can't even get out of my house because they're out in the back of the front yard. We, I mean, we really got to get control of this. And the other thing in that ordinance, it did state that they have to be registered, not every chicken, but the families who have them. So there are three ordinances in place, but they, they don't use the word chicken, they use the word fowl. So I just think that...
Yeah, they, there definitely need some...
Yeah, we need some more, just saying. Because I don't appreciate people calling me at 4:30 sharing the rooster next door.
No, and I agree, and most people have been fairly cooperative with getting rid of the roosters when they're asked to, so, so far.
Well, let's, let's try and, Ben, if you could try and find some of that, we, I think Ashley did that. And let's get the plan commission to look at putting something together.
Okay, I'm on board with that. We got to get everyone else on board if they want.
Secondly, up at McArthur School, the crosswalk across 129th to Addison or to High Grove, I looked at that, and there is no good place to put a crosswalk, because there's nowhere on the north side of 129th to receive the traffic on the other side. So the only thing I'd come up with, make it Addison a walking path instead of a road, because that's the only area there would be to cross them across into a roadway. So I kind of think that, you know, the situation there is there, and without getting some land on the north side of 129th, that the best, the best solution is to provide a crossing guard, or, I know that traffic, you know, pops on pictures, the traffic's lined all the way up down 129th picking up kids.
It's ridiculous, but you're, you're right, there's no way to do it.
The chief of police suggested that have them go on the sidewalk to 129th and then head down Fairbanks.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's whatever will work, but I think with the schools, I think with the school's new parking lot configuration and such, I think that they could probably come up with a plan sort of like Jane Ball does, and take that traffic into the school to pick up those kids instead of blocking that entire roadway at pickup time. I mean, now, prior, they had no place else to go, but now they have all that new place, where I think it looks to me like they would be able to, you know, come up with a game plan to put all that traffic in this, on the school property and pick those kids up.
Or at least a lot of them.
They, they said when they were building the school that they could accommodate 90 vehicles in that parking lot. I don't think they're getting 90 vehicles in there.
There's quite a bit of space there now to make something like that work, because they can go all the way around, you know, just kind of how Jane Ball does. There's three lanes of cars, I mean, they get, I don't know how many cars go in there, but I've been through there at the times, and there's quite a lot.
I've seen there's also.
I thought that was discussed during plan commission, when they did the remodeling, that they were supposed to do that, make it like a loop in the back.
Well, they do have the parking lot, but nobody ever went through with the picking up the cars, so maybe that's a discussion that you had with them to work out. I don't, I don't know, but I kind of, I looked at it again, and that's, that's my suggestion. So I like, this suggestion also, to head down the sidewalk, you still got to cross somewhere.
I brought this up at a school safety meeting last week, and the school was kind of surprised that there was, that somebody suggested the crosswalk.
And it was the staff?
Yeah, it was, it was one staff member that brought that up. They were, it wasn't well received, and they said, if there's nowhere, if there's no receiving sidewalks, it would be best not to have one there. And it really dealt with six kids, is what the school told me, and they could just funnel them down 129th to Fairbanks and into the subdivision along the sidewalks. So they were fine with that, but the director of safety is aware of it and looking into that. As far as the cars go, I think it's pretty new yet, and they've been trying to figure that out, yeah.
Okay, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Anything else for us, Tim?
Um, just, what else? Well, the Adah Shades project that we are working on, up there by Zim and at the corner, they got the drainage done, the culvert's in, some curbs poured. We should hopefully see paving there shortly.
Are we doing done by Rosati's too, that street?
Yeah.
Does that get curbed too?
On that hill, we added a couple more drains and some ditch work up on top of the hill by Fulton on 129th up there. So it should, I mean, it's a lot of...
Done by Rosati's, though, is that going to be curbed too?
No curves, just pavement.
So we're not going to lose width like we did up there? The width of the road seems like we lost width of the road now.
Can they, can they drive on those curbs?
You got to go on the right of way that you had.
Can they what?
Drive on the curbs?
Yeah, yeah.
So the curbs will be part of the road?
Yeah, just like all those single...
Yeah, and that, that is the roadway, it just was paved, that, you're driving in Cubel's parking lot when you were over to the other side. I mean, that, that is the road right of way, so that should handle a lot of that water coming down into that intersection now, and, I mean, that's moving forward well, so.
And stop the ice building up there and causing problems with vehicles.
Yeah, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Kubiak. Police Department Chief Grushka?
Okay, well, thank you. First, with the, our stats for the month of August, we had 787 calls to service, we had 235 traffic stops, and of those traffic stops, we issued 171 warnings, and we issued 113 citations. We had 818, oh, I'm sorry, 518 law incident reports. For those, we made 22 individual arrests, and there were 24 charges filed in that. For our town ordinance warnings, we issued four, and our ordinance citations, we issued 24. It should be noted, our ordinance code enforcement officer is out through mid-November, so the police have been picking that up. And we'd just like to mention, on Saturday, September 27th, we're going to be having a women's self-defense community outreach program. We currently have 29 people signed up for that, so we've had a good showing for that. It's going to be done on the 27th between 8:00 and noon at the Anover School Corporation Building. It's going to be taught by our reserve corporal Henry Appresty, and he's also going to be assisted by Sergeant Moke and Officers Dills and Solars. I'm looking forward to that. I'll show up for that, too, and see, I don't know what I can teach, but I'm sure it'll handle well. And also, on October 25th, we're getting ready for our trunk or treat. That's going to be between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. here at the town grounds, and we're currently accepting any donations for that candy. I'm looking forward to it. Our son has got an idea for my trunk, so I'm waiting to see what that's going to be. I also want to say, we updated our, just an update for our currency and custody ordinance, and want to give a big thank you to the clerk treasurer's office, particularly Jennifer and Gail. Did a lot of counting, we counted over $15,000, and now we got that all at the bank and into the fund. And would also like to thank attorney Austin for reviewing that ordinance and getting it all squared away. But so far, now the hard work comes, where we're going to try to find whose money it was.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to make some, we had some good police work done this month, and want to mention three particular cases. One was handled by Officer Ben King. It was a shoplifting case here at the Luke Gas Station. And what was good about that, he used the camera system and then took the individual pictures and posted them on social media. He stayed with it, was able to identify the perpetrator and make an arrest. Great job on his part. And also want to mention Officer Sean Meyer. The guy assisted the Lake County Sheriff's Department in a hit-and-run fatality that occurred by Nine Mile and 133rd. The guy is a savant with a license plate reader. He was able to find the car that did it, and then hence, they were able to trace that back to the owner, then locate the driver, and they were able to make an arrest on that. Just a great job. And then also want to mention Deputy Chief Brittingham and Commander Tom Kidd, and also Chief Mogger. We had a fire earlier with, last month or early this month, and it wound up, the fire, the cause of the fire was a meth lab, and there were some charges. We had great cooperation with the Cedar Lake Fire Department and with the Indiana State Police, their meth lab suppression unit came out. I learned a lot from them, and they did a great job and helped piece everything together for us, and also with the fire marshal. It was just a great team effort that led to some charges being filed, so it was great work. And also want to say, our annual insurance inventory list is almost complete. We should have that done by the end of the week.
Sounds good, chief.
And also, I got some complaints on e-bikes as well. And so, it's funny, I thought the best way to handle this might be to educate our kids, so let's get the school involved. When I called today, Mike O'Donnell, the director of safety there, said, but it's funny, we just finished our e-safety bike class. And so there was a big, we had to, he had some assistance from Sergeant Dave Moke and Corporal Jason Alande. They did the classes at the middle school and at the high school. So we're hoping, you know, and basically, our line is, we hate to write the citations for that for kids, we just want them to be safe and have fun doing it and get around town. That's our bottom line, so we're hoping these classes help them a lot. And we'll keep hounding that throughout the year, and then even once winter gets here, we'll probably drop that and then wait till spring and then rehash this, get it back out there.
Can we open it up so that both schools have that same opportunity of that education?
Which, which school?
The Crown Point School Corporation?
Oh, yeah, with, with David Colson.
Right, thank you.
But that's all I have.
Chief, I got something.
That's all?
I am bored. Actually, it might be beneficial to Tim, Ben, and yourself. I know there's been some discussion about grand prize cars up there on 41. When they get cars delivered and that car hauler pulls over to the side of the road, it is virtually impossible to get out of those businesses. Somebody's going to get killed over there if they keep doing that.
Yeah, I received a complaint this week, was looking into that, I was going to go over there. And maybe get with the owner of that to see where we can put them. Because I mean, I get their business, it's, it's not parking, it's more their unloading.
Yeah, it's not an unloading zone.
But it's just kind of want to make that, yeah.
It's a, it has become a serious safety. I mean, there's not enough room there, first of all. He's got to, whoever's unloading the cars got to weave out into traffic on 41 to get them into the parking lot. But you can't, there's a couple other businesses there, and you can't...
Oh, yeah, with, uh, with, um, Dave Coulson.
Thank you.
But that's all I have.
Chief, I got something. I, I am born, actually it might be beneficial to Tim, Ben and yourself. I know there, there's been some discussion about grand prize cars up there on 41. When they get cars delivered and that car hauler pulls over to the side of the road, it is virtually impossible to get out of those businesses. Somebody's going to get killed over there if they keep doing that.
Big blind spot.
Yeah, I received a complaint this week, was looking into that. I was going to go over there, um, and maybe get with the owner of that to see where we can put them. Cause I mean, I get their business, it's, it's not parking, it's more their unloading.
Yeah.
But it's just kind of want to make that, yeah.
It's a, it, it has become a serious safety. I mean, there's not enough room there, first of all. He's got to, whoever's unloading the car's got to weave out into traffic on 41 to get them into the parking lot. But you can't, there's a couple of other businesses there and you can't see to get out of there.
It's pretty bad at McDonald's too with some of the semi-drivers that stop in for food. I notice that every once in a while going home.
I, I just don't want to see anybody tragically, seriously injured, killed up there because they can't come up with a better.
Yeah, I received a complaint this week on it and, uh, just haven't had a chance to get over there yet. But will this week.
Okay.
So thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, chief. Fire Department Chief Magger.
Good evening, council. Starting with staffing, we're moving forward with the hiring process for the replacement hires. Um, and I would like to acknowledge firefighter paramedic buyer as he received, who was nominated by us and received, uh, the 2025 Albert's Jewelers award here award last month. Moving to training and operations, the reports are within your packets. Uh, total training hours for a month of August were 124, total incidents of 229 notably, uh, 16% increase from last year at the same time. Uh, community engagement, um, multiple personnel participated in a party in a park at Lemon Lake. Um, a lot of public relations apparatus review was done. Uh, there was a total of 700 people in attendance for that event, so it was real nice community engagement there. Um, moving on to budgeting, as of the end of August, we were 67% complete with the year with 64% of the budget utilized.
Well, TV, good job. Very good. Thank you, chief. Parks Department, Ms. Ray.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
In addition to the conversation about the park impact fees, there was a recommendation that was sent to, um, Council every September 5th with, uh, recommendations from the park boards. In addition to, it was kind of just outlining next steps for everybody involved. They had asked, uh, made a recommendation for you to begin the park impact advisory committee selection. Um, and that would be necessary steps, uh, one of the necessary steps belongs to the comprehensive plan. So, um, there's a really nice, uh, packet of how to pick those and, and what's needed for that board. Um, and my understanding is either by council president or by town manager directives to start, um, putting that, uh, together. And then the park board will then begin working, um, on the park impact fees that I've been at all. And, um, I've already been asked to get quotes, uh, from engineering firms on that. So that is moving forward, um, in several directions.
Okay, I, oh, I'm sorry. I was out of town the past two weeks. Did, did you send us that packet at all, Mindy?
This was actually out in your council packets this week, but it's, um, it was sent September 5th to you as well. It's just letting know like the recommendations and the tree that came before you was also mentioned in there.
Okay.
And, um, yeah. So I wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you.
Um, if we have any further questions, we've, uh, consulted with Attorney Oustian on the process and the needs that, uh, we need to do so.
Straight in the row. Then advisory board, so we needed an engineer or realtor, what was the search?
Uh, CPA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Dave, do we need to advertise for those spots? Just like, okay.
You can if you want.
Okay, just, just to kind of get the word out, we might.
Is this timeline kind of tight?
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah.
I don't know if we have time for that.
Okay.
In the past, they were just appointed.
Yeah.
Well, we could find an engineer or CPA.
Yeah, in the past, they were just appointed, they weren't, we didn't advertise for it, so I think that. Nick and Ben can handle it.
Yeah. Okay.
I trust you.
Anything else, Ms. Ray?
Uh, we, uh, we had our 21 and over event on Saturday, uh, man through the Bubba Boo's. A huge thank you to Bubba Boo's as a local restaurant here in the community. Uh, they just stepped up and, and brought everything they had to the plate. Um, they were wonderful to work with in, in this environment. Um, probably the majority of the people who showed up were Bubba Boo fans, so they had found out through the restaurant and those to follow it. Um, so we were happy to be able to execute a 21 and over event and, um, you know, hopefully we can plan for, for more in the future now that we've, you know, the hardest is the first, always.
No, I, I showed up down there and I saw that the adults were on one side and they had kids off to the side.
Some people did have kids, yeah.
We had, we had a couple of families who showed up and missed the memo that it was a 21 and over event. Of course, we were carding and, uh, we had security at it. And, uh, they chose just to sit on the other side of the midway and enjoy the opportunity as well. And, uh, they probably had to rest in the house to be honest, because where they were sitting outside of the event space. So, uh, our next kid-friendly event is coming up on October 25th, which is trunk or treat, which Chief Grushka had spoke on. And if anybody in the community is wanting to come in and be a vendor, uh, please reach out to the parks office before October 10th so we can secure you a space. And, uh, we are accepting donations of candy as well to help offset those vendors. Um, because a lot of kids come through, we get, get over 1,000 trunk or treaters in that timeframe. And we're adding a few more components to this year's trunk or treat, which will include a DJ and a, um, Hey Ride. So, uh, we might see even more, uh, participants coming out. So if you can't make it, but you can throw a bag of candy our way, it will just help make it better for all the attendees that do attend.
And periodically I go down to part of Walburg Park and I talk to the resident, uh, I don't know if they're residents, I talk to the people and everybody just brags about that park.
We're making, uh, some really nice, um, improvements to that space. I know that we kind of have some caution tape up, but we're overseeding and trying to repair the grass area. Um, you know, we, we had to tear up a little bit to do the shelter, um, but we're just trying to get some of that crabgrass beat out by an overseeding process right now, uh, because we want to be good stewards to the lake and not use any meat and feed products that would run off into the lake.
And the shelter isn't one that you can rent because of limited parking, correct?
Just going to leave it as an amenity at this time and there might be reconsideration for it. Parking is so limited, I'd hate for the community not be able to enjoy the space because of rental took place. So that's, that's the thought at this time, but time will tell if that is the right decision and maybe have to be reviewed.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Thank you.
Moving on to written communication in our packets, we have the building department report as well as the Christopher B. Burke report. I do want to read a letter that was submitted to us into the record under written communications. It is a letter dated Thursday, September 4th, 2025 from Alan J. Latt's 12732 Wheeler Street here in Cedar Lake. Uh, topic is Public Works and tension town manager, Mr. Eldridge.
Over the Labor Day weekend, the children on our blocks, 127th Place Wheeler Street, were riding their bicycles and some had stopped at the crosswalk near a stop sign. Some started screaming, some neighbors went to find out why. Hornets and wasps were found emerging from the stop sign and targeting anyone who got close. On Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, I contacted the town of Cedar Lake in hopes they could remedy the situation, thinking they would come by and check and call out an exterminator. Public Works Director Tim Kubiak came out to check. He checked the stop sign in question and then checked the other two stop signs in the area. He went up to the signs and cautiously loosened the stop sign and sprayed the wasps and hornets, hornets. After successfully eliminating the insects, he scraped the enormous nest from the inside of the sign. As it fell to the ground, he sprayed the insects again. He cleaned out the stop sign and sprayed the inside again and replaced the sign. Mr. Kubiak did the same to the stop sign directly across the street from my home. I just want you to know, one, how brave Mr. Kubiak was. You're a hero. And give him a round of applause. And, and, and two, his fast response and decision to eliminate a wasp sting, especially to the young children in the area. I expressed my gratitude to him. His response was, we are always here for you, never hesitate to call the town if you need anything. It is refreshing to know, Mr. Eldridge, that you have a wonderful crew that works for you. In addition, from our first encounter after moving down here, the entire town of Cedar Lake staff has always been professional and a joy to speak with. Please let Mr. Kubiak, uh, I really do appreciate all he did. So, Tim, you're a hero in town.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, sure.
I gathered the staff at town hall and, and read that to everybody. Uh, while Mr. Kubiak was there and, uh, yeah, he is a joy that I have in the office every day.
He was much more dramatic in his reading though.
It almost was like a novel.
There was quite a few wasps in there though.
And going, going back to the building, uh, report, uh, it looks like we've, uh, had, uh, 82 new construction permits for the year, so it looks like we're going to probably reach what we thought of 100.
Looks that way, Bob. Yes, sir. All right, we will move on to public comment. We'll open forward public comment for the town council. Yeah, just please come on up and state your name and address for the record, sir.
Sir, my name is Michael Feeney. I live at 13835 Huesman Street. I was here a year ago, September 3rd, 24th, to bring to the board's attention what I believe was a code violation. The person that built the house next to me, uh, had a code variance agreement of five feet, which he violated this agreement, putting his house almost onto the property line. He violated the agreement by three to five feet. Then he come in and he put in a whole home generator. Part of the generator is on my property. It's eight inches from the side of the house. He never got a permit to put the generator in from the city. We found this out on the first of, uh, the first of January this year, our lawyer, we had to get a lawyer, was notified by Mr. Kubiak that, uh, no permit was ever granted. Now, this was in January. January 10th, you knew, uh, Mr. Kubiak knew that no permit was ever granted. Nothing to this day has ever been done. Finally, I went, I got ahold of NIFSCO and I got ahold of Cedar Lake Fire Department, which response was immediate to find out what's going on, to get their opinion. NIFSCO told me to get ahold of the fire department. And then the fire department told me to get ahold of the building department. I finally, I came down here, I told the, somebody here that I'm bringing in the fire department and NIFSCO. They agree with me that there's a code violation here.
There's many.
Today, Mr. Kubiak did finally come out, thank you. He came out one year and one week later. He came out September the 11th to look at, to see the code violations. Now, it's still running, it's still going on today. The generator is still there. Mr. Fleming has sold the property. Now, I don't know if there was some sort of a, uh, variance, some sort of an agreement that this man, this man purchases the property knowing that the generator was, has, was not permitted. Does his insurance company, does his mortgage company know that he bought a house? That the insurance, uh, that the generator has not been permitted? It was gangstered in there? It's been there for five years. According to the code violations, that could be from 125 to $1,250 a day. 1,800 days. You could buy two new fire trucks if you find a man with, uh, his violations. I just want to know what's going on and why this generator has not been retained.
Thank you, sir. Tim, can you fill us in on what's going on with this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I got only the violations, it was never permitted.
Okay. All right. Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been out there. Um, if you want to discuss it out here, what I've seen or what the situation is.
Yeah, I would like to.
I mean, I guess, I went out there and verified there is a generator there, um, that wasn't permitted. It was put in five years ago, four to five years ago. Um, his complaint was that there was a generator put in without a permit. Um, there was a fresh air intake within, right next to it that was putting carbon monoxide to the inside of the house. I went and looked at it, um, I seen a trier vent there that was more than three feet away, which is the code. The furnace intake was combustion air and it was probably 12 feet away, so I didn't see any immediate danger from the installation. Uh, I guess issuing a red tag to a generator that was installed five years ago per se, I didn't know. I had a short discussion with Ben about this and we kind of.
Sure, the generator is in a walkway, you can see the stairs.
Okay.
I didn't know where to, really where to go with this one. I mean, I don't know how, how.
Is, is this, is, is that the large home that's built next to you folks?
It's huge, yeah.
Okay.
The generator was on my property.
So the, and I would think I was on the BZA when that house got approval. There were no contingencies that there couldn't be stuff like that placed along the side yard?
I, I went and looked at the generator for the safety concern, but I have not looked into that yet.
Cause you know, sometimes with some of those setbacks, no air conditioners and, you know, anything like that.
I don't know that, I haven't got to that point yet, but I don't know. It was, it was supposed to be a five-foot side yard. Um, I don't know that it's on their property or not. There was some, two different surveys that showed two different things, um, so.
But at the end of the day, it wasn't permitted.
At the end of the day, it was not permitted.
Dave, what can we do about this?
It's in a walkway, it's at the bottom of the staircase.
No, I'm talking to our attorney.
He's asking the attorney.
You have permit violations and you may enforce them.
That was what?
You have code violations and you may enforce them under your codes.
Can I ask a question? Is it against the law to put something in without getting a permit?
Of course it's against the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, Attorney Oustian, should we, so the house has been sold, correct?
The house has been sold and I don't know if the new owner knows that this generator.
So we can go back and we can.
Without a permit, so who do I owe it?
Hang on, sir.
So, so we can go back and issue the violations? We would have to go back and send those to the previous homeowner?
You could start there.
I would suppose. And I know my age to start just to be there with an adult.
Sir, hang on. Could go to the previous homeowner?
You could, you could start there. You know the grayness in that one though.
Okay. Well, I think something needs to be done. I mean, for, for the, the fact that we didn't enforce some, now these folks have to fight for their property back or whatever, if it isn't truly encroaching.
We're in a fight.
Yeah, so I would, I would pursue it and I would look at the BZA, uh, the variance given on that too, to see if there was something there. But I guess at the end of the day, it wasn't permitted, it wasn't permitted.
And that's a crime. I want to know that that is a crime. He stripped the city out of their permit money.
Can, would.
I didn't say it was, sir, I didn't say it was a crime. Be careful about it, it's code violation. We have code requirements for building and improvements. Somebody violated, didn't come in and give inspection, get permits issued. So it's more administrative, although there's apparently been a big cost.
Does that permit cost money?
Or yes, permits cost money.
Mr. Feeney, would you mind giving your, before the end of the night, giving your contact information to the town manager? That way he, uh, he can follow up with you on this, please? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment for the council?
Joyce, Ivy 13874 Hatters. Well, I just have a question about that Verizon tower.
Okay.
Where exactly is this supposed to build?
This way.
Either WP and Wellsite is?
Yeah.
Just to the south of here? Up against the far west side of the property, if I remember seeing the map right where they were putting it.
Yeah, there's a large kind of clearing there and weeds and.
Woods up against it, low slump area behind it and.
Yep. Thank you, man. Mindy, were you trying to get my attention? I'm sorry. That was a BZA.
It dropped out of the sky and I think this is the variance that you were trying to look for.
Oh, wow, that was quick. Okay. I'm sorry?
It does specify that nothing is to be in that pipe of section.
Well, there you go. Okay.
There you go.
All right, thank you, Cliff.
Good job.
Quick work. Any, any other public comment? Last call?
He, he, he's well worth his money.
Thanks, Cliff. Anybody online to say?
No hands raised.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 7th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Everybody have a good night.